A invocation by Ms. LeBlanc.
Okay. So although I know it's not officially spring, but we had daylight savings and it's, we drove here tonight in a lighter place. I think that we all have a better attitude, so I am going to give a spring blessing. Spring is here. Let the warm breezes of the season bring new beginnings and positive attitude. Now is the time to plant seeds of faith, of hope, and of love. Tell yourself that anything is possible. You can reach your goals, you can live your dreams, work hard, bless others, and don't let anyone bring you down. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America. Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Fire evacuation, if it was any emergency, we have two ways out, to the rear of the chambers, out the doors, or to my left, your right, down the stairs to the left, and out to the rear parking lot. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. Neville?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Mr. Renier?
Mrs. Tapoe?
Here.
Mr. Rutledge?
Mrs. Riley?
Here.
Chairman Crizell?
Here. Mr. Renier is running a little late. He should be joining us shortly, and Mr. Rutledge is running a lot late. He will not be here. Number six, board guests, Mr. Dreszek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So listed on your agenda tonight, there was a slight scheduling mix-up, and our winter student athletes aren't able to come to this board meeting, but they're going to come to the next scheduled board meeting. But we do have another special guest, and I'll warn you in advance, you're probably going to agree to do something you didn't even know it when she's done with you. But we'd like to welcome, from Enfield Youth Services, our Enfield Together Coalition members Joan Lawson, as well as our Houston Family Service Director Jean Hoi, and Bonnie Smith from MPH is here as well. So the floor is yours.
Grab the extra chair and join us at the table. And break bread with us. And just pull that microphone up so you speak loudly in the microphone.
This one?
That one.
Okay. Well, I want to personally thank you for letting us come.
Pull it a little closer.
A little closer, like this?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
We want everybody on ETV to hear.
Oh, thank you, Chris, for letting us come, and thank you for letting us present. I don't know if you're aware, but we have, when, with the school, been doing student surveys every two years since about 2009. So what we have done through our funding is track substance use trends over the years to kind of see what's the current use of our youth, sort of where should we be concerned? Were we making a difference? Were we making a positive impact? And over the years, we've added questions around depression, and bullying, and suicide, because that's another initiative that's very important to us, to kind of track, to see where we need to be to support our students. So again, I appreciate this opportunity to present this to you. So I have Joan Lawson, who is our Chair of our ETC, to kind of talk about ETC, its mission, its vision, and what it does, and then I'll turn it over to Bonnie to really get into the data and the survey stuff. Okay.
Well, thank you so much. I feel really privileged to be a part of this coalition. I think I've been with it since its beginning, and ETC, our vision is to move forward together and finishing strong, our tagline is, "Enfield Together, moving forward, drug-free, finishing strong." And I really like that "together" because we can't do this alone. And our mission is dedicated to reducing and preventing underage drinking and substance use in Enfield through raising awareness, education of parents and youth, and enforcing underage drinking laws. And our target audience is parents and youth ages eight to 18. And one of the ways we do this is through our positive messaging. And as the Chair of the Enfield Together Coalition, I am not alone in this. We have, we have sectors, 12 sectors, that make up our coalition, and that is a great strength, because we have meetings monthly, actually downstairs in the Enfield room. And we have seen momentum growing in the people who are showing up to our meetings, and it's very exciting. I feel like what we're doing is really beginning to make a difference. And again, we are data-driven, and one of the things that we had put together last year was an info brief about our Enfield Student Survey, age, for grade six through 12. And this would be available, we can get it to Kathy, and she can make copies, but we do have that available. And the other, again, thing that has been exciting is, again, we, our substance are alcohol, prescription drugs, and marijuana. And in February and March, we were focusing on the substance of marijuana. And we were able to meet in February with a group of seven of us, actually two enforcement. We split up into two vehicles and really canvassed our town to put out the message on these little table tents that says, "Teach them the lows of getting high," and "Have the pot-talk," and "What you say and do matters." And we really felt encouraged, because so many of the places that we took this message to our restaurants, were really open to have us put these on their tables. And bringing our enforcement really makes a statement. People really love that. And one of the places that, if you go to the ShopRite store in Enfield, they have these at their cash register where you cash out. So they've even come onboard to help us get that messaging out. So I feel really privileged to work with such a wonderful group of people. I represent the faith community in our coalition, and we are, I really believe, we are moving forward, and we're seeing things in our community begin to change, and the awareness. And one of the visions, we do go to a conference yearly called CATCA, where we get a lot of this training, and the vision that I really saw coming back was, I want ETC to be a household name, that when they see something like this, they're going to say, "Oh, that's Enfield Together Coalition." I really believe that that can happen, and working with the great people that I work with, and working with our prevention coordinator, Colleen Violet, she has really been such an encouragement to me, and I know Jean, to myself, to really work with a group of people to see things in our community happen. So I am totally sold-out to this mission of what we are doing. I think that's it.
Oh, yes. Okay.
Hi, everyone. I'm Bonnie Smith. I'm the evaluation consultant for ETC, and I've worked with ETC as an evaluation consultant for quite a long time, but in general, in other capacities, I think probably almost 18 years, really, with Youth Services in various ways. So I've had the pleasure of watching ETC grow, and seek a lot of funding, and get a lot of funding. It's quite a successful coalition. I do this work in other communities, and I like to say, I do use ETC as a model for my other coalitions that I work with that are really trying to develop themselves. So I'm always pleased to be working with ETC, and Jean, and Colleen, and I'm thrilled to be here tonight. So I'm going to walk through some data, and feel free to ask questions if you'd like, or at the end, we can go through some questions as well. One thing that we always like to remind folks is, there are risk and protective factors related to youth and adult substance use, but talking specifically to youth, here are some things that can make youth more vulnerable to substance use and other risky behaviors. So of course, access of substances, a co-occurring mental health problem, which I know many of you talked to Jean about in various capacities, having academic difficulties, perception of risk, thinking that risk is not, or using substances are not risky, an early first use, your peers using, and of course, family stressors. There's many others, but these are those that rise to the top. Here's some background on a survey. This survey that we're discussing this evening occurred in 2017, in grade six through 12. It was the first year the survey was implemented with the joint high schools. So that was something different that we considered. We had just about a 72% response rate, which is what we like to see. It's a very good, reliable rate. And I guess, actually, looking back, we've looking, been looking at trends as far back as 2005, but we used 2009 as our baseline for evaluation purposes. So here are what we kind of focus in on generally, as these core substances in past 30-day or past-month use. In the blue, you'll see the middle-school use rates, which thankfully are quite low, as we would expect. And then in the orange, you'll see high school. And I tend to focus, when I speak, on high school, because that is where you see the most use rates. So pardon me if you feel I'm neglecting the middle-school as we work through this. But here you can see that marijuana came in as the most commonly-used substance in the past 30 days, at 22.6%, followed by alcohol at 20.4%. And then you see that we have e-cigarettes popping in there, and we'll talk more about e-cigarettes as we move forward. A lot of communities like to ask me about heroin when we review their survey data, and I always like to point out that heroin is a devastating and concerning substance in all of our communities, but we typically don't see a substantial use rate in youth. Tends to rise at the age 18 and over. Gambling is recorded here as well, and you'll see that 12.1% of high school students reported gambling in the past month, and there can be risk factors associated with gambling and substance use. This is considering where youth access alcohol. So the most common location for our middle-school students was at home with parents' permission, and then they noted "other" as the other, and we unfortunately can't tell you what that is without doing focus groups. But the high school report, getting it from friends, followed by at home with parents' permission, then other people who buy it for you, and at home without parents' permission. Very rarely do we see youth purchasing it at a restaurant or a bar. So this is, again, thinking about risk and protective factors. This question is, how much do you think people harm themselves physically or in other ways when they do any of the following? And so the middle-school, the substances are closer. It's, you know, the middle-school kids tend to think, "Most things are not a great choice for me at this time. They could be harmful," with gambling being perceived as the least harmful. At the high school, you see greater variation, with marijuana perceived as even less harmful than gambling, and heroin being perceived as the most harmful, followed by prescription drugs and cigarettes, traditional cigarettes. This is about perception of parental approval or disapproval. So how wrong do your parents or guardians feel it would be if you did these things? Same pattern, the middle-school parents, they think, you know, "My family wouldn't be very pleased about this," generalized. And then at the high school, again, marijuana, they have less concern about what their parents think it would be wrong or very wrong, also gambling. And the rest kind of remain around the same, with alcohol being, you know, slightly lower than some of those other... So we all want to see this always high. And this is about perception of peer approval or disapproval. How wrong would your friends feel it would be for you to do the following? Very similar patterns here as well, with marijuana being perceived as the most acceptable to peers at the high school level. This is our trend data, and this is a lot of information in one place, so forgive me for what you're seeing, but we have generally very positive news. You can see, starting at the left, alcohol has steadily gone down. Back in 2009, 37.5% of high school youth reported using alcohol in the past 30 days, and in 2017, it was down to 20.4%. That's highly significant. Binge-drinking has declined over the years and then remained fairly steady. Drinking under the, or driving under the influence of alcohol has gone up a little bit between 2015 and 2017. I can't tell you why. There might be some sort of cohort effect here, where sometimes impressions among youth, like the 11th and 12th graders, for some reason, those kids in that year might have been participating in that more than the kids in 2015. Cigarette use has gone down. We started monitoring e-cigarettes in 2013, and the reported past-month use rates are much lower in 2017 as compared to 2013, which surprises me a bit. I think if we asked the kids today, even that much longer since we've done this survey, about past-month use, we'd see a much larger number, based on what I understand of most communities at this time. Heroin, again, has gone down significantly, with a slight uptick in the last survey round. I can't tell you if that's statistically significant, it's pretty close. Marijuana has gone down over the years, with again, that little uptick, and prescription drugs, a similar trend, but very close. So overall, things are going very well in terms of youth substance use, and these trends mirror what we see at the state and the national level, so I feel confident in the data. Focusing in on cigarettes and e-cigarettes for a moment, this is just the comparison of past 30-day use of that traditional cigarette product and e-cigarettes. So traditional cigarettes, in the high school level, 5.4% reported use, and 13.1% reported use of e-cigarettes in the past 30 days. When asked what youth who reported using an e-cigarette are using in the e-cigarette, they could select all that apply, and the most common substance came out to be e-flavored liquids, followed by marijuana or cannabis products, tobacco and nicotine very close behind, and alcohol was reported as well. Other, I don't know what that is, but... We thought you might have an interest in looking at the bullying by grade level. So lifetime bullying, have you ever, is in the light blue. Past-month bullying is the orange, and then frequent or daily bullying is that lighter purple-blue color. This is what I typically see as a stepwise pattern for grade-level bullying, where you see sort of a peak at that eighth-grade level, and then it levels out a bit and declines by 11th and 12th grade. So very typical of what I would see in every school system. I thought I heard a question. No, okay. Oh, yes.
How is the lifetime bullying declining? If we have a peak of people who reported in eighth grade, they should still be the same people who would have experienced it. So how would it be declining over time?
That's a really good question. So we take this survey every two years. I have to think it might have to do with recall. So if you're being bullied in middle-school, and it's in the past 30 days, you're going to check lifetime, and you're going to check past 30 days. By the time you get to 10th grade, whatever happened at that time may not seem as significant to you. You've had that life experience. So if something hasn't happened in the past 30 days, in the past six months, you might not be selecting that lifetime. That's just off-the-cuff what I'm thinking is possible. I hadn't thought about it in terms of that. But sometimes what's important to you in that sixth grade isn't as significant by the time you get older. That's a great question, though.
So would you say that the 60% that you're seeing in the teachers is truly the most representative of what people have experienced?
I would say yes. I mean, the kids, it's defined in the survey, and I can read you how it's defined if you'd like, but that seems consistent with what I see in other communities. That's my best answer to you, is it's consistent. And sometimes it's how we interpret questions, but we've used the same questions across different communities, in this community for many years. I just want to find it for you. So the bullying definition in the survey, "A person is bullied when he or she is exposed repeatedly and over time to negative actions on the part of one or more persons, and he or she has difficulty defending himself or herself." And then there's a whole series of questions that follow, and I'm only presenting one little tidbit of data, and the full survey report can certainly be disseminated to all of you, so you can look at the details, because it goes into how often, how were you bullied, where were you bullied, by whom, did you involve teachers or other adults? I mean, there's a lot of detail, if you want to get into that. Sure. Yeah, got you, okay. Moving into some of the mental health indicators, this is what we reference as our depression indicator. So agreement or disagreement with the statement, "I felt so sad or hopeless it stopped me from doing my usual activities," and this is the reporting, "often, always, or almost always." And the middle-school, this is trend data, only over two years. The middle-school's seen a slight uptick, but I can't tell you that that is statistically significant, and the same could be said for the high school between 2015 and 2017. So last reported at 14.7% of high school youth reporting agreement to this, which is, again, what I see in other communities as well. I usually see a range of 12 to 15%.
Are you testing the kids as a cohort? Are you testing the same kids, or what? If we're making comparisons here, if there's a change up or down, is everybody that's in sixth to eighth grade getting the test, and everybody in ninth to 12th grade getting the test, or is it, do you just do it at like, eighth grade or seventh grade, or?
Oh, it's, there's no sampling strategy here. So anyone who's in school and agrees to participate, didn't have a parent opt them out?
Okay.
Takes the survey. If their answers are inconsistent, like they have identified using every substance every day, they are removed from the sample pool. But other than that, it's a cross-cut of who's in school that day or over a series of days.
Any idea what percentage of parents opt them out?
I don't have, well, actually, I might actually have.
I don't need it right now. I just, I'd be curious about that.
I think it might be in the, we don't usually actually get that for the survey report. It's usually very few, I believe.
Okay, that's good to hear. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Sure. And then this is our suicide indicator. Seriously considered attempting suicide within the past year, again, that often, always, or almost always, and there's been an increase at both middle and high school between 2015 and 2017, more significantly than we saw for that depression indicator, with up to 8.2% reporting that at the high school level in 2017. I think this is a very serious slide. Even 1% is very serious, in my mind, as a mother. So I'm grateful that you have people on board who take this seriously. And now I'm going to turn this over to Jean.
So through our partnerships, we've done a lot to try to address sort of the risk factors that we're concerned about substance use, and certainly suicide and depression. Our town did hire two clinical social workers, so that we can get into more early intervention and identification of students who may be showing warning signs to me. That is where we need to be. We need to be identifying our kids early and often before they get into a crisis. So keeping, working on ways that we can do that through the schools is really important to me, so we'll be talking a lot about that. My favorite word is screening. So just like when you go to the doctor, we know there's certain things that we need to be monitoring every year about your health. We know the same thing applies for mental health. So we need to be checking our kids early and often, so that we can catch them again early when they first start that first set of use, so they're starting to feel really sad, that we can get them connected with healthy supports and resources. And we're starting to do that through our juvenile review board now. We're really working with the schools, changing some policies, so that we can be more supportive and more caring, so we know we can't arrest our way out of these problems, we can't suspend our way out of these problems. I know there's got to be consequences, but we also have to find ways to sort of bring them in and support them, and help them, and understand why you're starting to use substances, why you're using in school. I guess I want to know that, right? Like, why are you so sad that you feel like harming yourself? Because if we know those things, we can help change their environment to make them more healthy, and they're with you all day, and sometimes you are the only positive, supportive person in your life. So schools are so, so important, and I just, I have to say, I'm so appreciative of the superintendent and deputy, because going after grants and going after ways to kind of improve the way we can support kids is so important, as we learn where we're good at, where we're weak at, where's our gaps, where's our resources, how do we connect them. I can go on forever, but I'll stop. But I thank you for all of the data, because your data has driven us to be cutting-edge with going after grant funding that's allowed us to develop capacity, understanding, doing research, getting best-practice initiatives, because without that, we would be floundering, because funding is going to follow cutting-edge trending initiatives, and you guys are there every step of the way. So it's really exciting that we go after this stuff. My biggest, my biggest thing that we've just done, thank you, is our Suicide Prevention Steering Committee that was formed after our tragic loss. We're now morphing that into a, can I say this? I guess I am. So we're proposing to do a Youth Mental Health and Wellness Advisory Committee, an MOU with the town, so we can sustain the work that the Suicide Advisory Committee is doing, and we'll broaden it to the scope of all prevention, and we can sustain town funding to help support this initiative. I just want to sustain the work, because Tim and I are going to retire someday, and we need all of you to, you know, to kind of hold that history and hold this importance. And then that kind of gets into all the ways that we've worked with suicide prevention. Our police department does a Fragile with Care Initiative, so that kids who get exposed to a traumatic event, you know, the school gets notified of that, because good sort of post-prevention is good prevention, so those kids who are going through those difficult times, we can get in and support them, instead of seeing them as just a behavior discipline issue when they come into school with no homework, and they can't sit still, and they're worried, and they don't have their lunch money, and all this other stuff. And we've just formed a Trauma-Informed School Mental Health Committee. Scott is a part of that. We were awarded a national grant, so we're, we just started the work on that, and again, I'm so grateful for the partnership to sort of understand what we can be doing different and better. And then, oh, and then, working with the Connecticut Child Health and Development Institute, they did a evaluation of us this past year, and that PowerPoint has just come to us, so that might be interesting for you all to see, their evaluation of, it's our mental health, sort of resources, services, gaps, strengths, and weaknesses. And I'm not sure what that last one is. And then the Training and Resource Development, which the town funds and grant funds, is our ability to train nationally, which, again, I think has developed a really broad group IQ, I would say, so we're not always coming up with just different ideas, and we just don't agree on how to proceed, and then we're all learning sort of best practices together. So there's a group cohesiveness that has come with that. So that's where we are, and I thank you for that.
Mr. LeBlanc had it handed over.
So I want to thank you for all the work that you do. A little thing about me that not a lot of people know, except my close friends, but I am a huge documentary buff, whether it be books or movies. And recently, I wrote a book called Victoria's Voice. I don't know if you've heard of it. A girl who was 21 died of an overdose, and her parents found her diary. She had told a friend, "If I ever don't wake up, please tell my mother where this diary is." And so the family published the diary, and the majority of the book is actual pages from her diary. That was her wish. And it was really, it, just talking about it gives me goosebumps. I was captivated by this, by this book, and what she shared in her journal, and, you know, it all started with alcohol and marijuana. That was her, and I know that that's what everybody says, that's the gateway, especially marijuana, and, you know, it just progressed to her going to get some mental health, and then abusing those prescription drugs she was using, and then it just kind of catapulted from there. And what was interesting about the journal, as she got more into her addiction, some of the entries didn't necessarily make sense, or her anger really came out about what she was dealing with. And it was just a phenomenal book, that I just wish, it just came out, so many more people knew about, because I feel like if there are kids struggling, or even an adult, it's just to know that there's other people that are feeling that way. And then, all in one week, I watched a movie called A Beautiful Boy, which is a true story about addiction that's been out for a while, and that journey that that family took. And it was interesting, too, because when the father suspected him abusing again, he found his journal. And what he found in that journal were pictures of how he was feeling on the inside. So I'm glad that there are people like you in this community that work with our youth, and help them, and educate them, and you're even taking it one step further, because I feel like you're trying to educate us, the parents and the grandparents as well. I think that, you know, teenagers, they have a feeling like, "It's no big deal if I just smoke this pot," or I do, you know, "I drink," or whatever. And it's just a very scary time, sometimes, I feel like, and I have one in college, I have one going off to college, and it's actually scary, you know, because you think of what you're... know, because you think of what you're not going to be able to control and stuff like that. But it's just, you coming tonight just kind of spurred me into thinking about that movie and then that book that I just read. And, again, I just thank you for all the work that you've done. I love the trends that you do. I feel like just having teenagers in my life, what you're saying, it makes a lot of sense with how kids view, you know, e-cigarettes and the marijuana. It's interesting, because I feel like marijuana is like right up there with alcohol. And it used to, when I was a kid, it wasn't as much about that. But, again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blankhouter. Ms. Reider.
Let me thank you for all that you do. I did have questions, though. On the survey itself, maybe on the pages that talk about suicide and bullying and substance abuse, do you put like a little thing on the bottom that says, you know, if you're, you know, feeling this way, or if you have these issues, please, these resources are available to you, please contact whatever, kind of a thing? So that they have it right there while they're thinking about it?
Here's it. I think you bring up a good point. And over the years in working on survey development, we've talked with mental health professionals about the cost-benefit of survey questions. And the mental health professionals that we've worked with have indicated that these questions should not be triggering for someone who was in that state of mind. However, there is a statement at the end of the survey, just generalized. "If anything in this survey made you upset or brought up feelings of confusion, please talk to your school psychologist, school counselor, or your teacher." So, it's a generalized statement. There's a lot of things in here that could certainly bring something up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, I know that you guys deal with, you know, ages eight to 18. Do you think that that is early enough to bring up some things? Or do you think we need to start targeting some earlier ages? Because, you know, kids will see, you know, prescription drugs in their parents', you know, cabinets or...
I'm just going to talk as someone who's been in the field, and anybody can chime in. Oftentimes, our grants have a certain time period that we have to focus on. So, the grants are often ranging from grade six to 12. And there's not as much evidence-based curriculum out there or evidence-based approaches for younger. But I'm also a mom, like I mentioned, so, working in the field, absolutely, there are things you should be talking to kids about, younger and younger.
Yeah.
I don't know if you have any.
I don't know. I think with little ones, that the, more important to talk to parents. I know the old dare, just say no, and then focus just on the early ages and grades were not enough, because our kids start using in middle school. I do think there's a deeper need, and we've sort of have a suicide prevention grant, to talk to kids about self-care and identifying a caring person and helping them identify feelings. And there's this cute little book called Gizmo, which talks to kids about their feelings and their troubles. And if they felt there was somebody in school that they could talk to, if they were worried or concerned, they can create a little valentine that says, "You care about me, and if I have a problem, I'll come talk to you." I think at that age, it's helping them identify feelings, building really supportive and comfortable relationships, and identifying a trusted adult they can go to. So, there's communications when they're starting to get into trouble or difficulty. There's someone there that they can talk to.
Yeah.
I think there's no harm in giving them some drug education. I just don't know how much they understand at those early ages. I think it's all about relationships at that age.
Yeah. Cool. And the other question, that's going to definitely date me. Is there anything around nowadays like Dare was when I was in school? Like, do they have those? I remember it was like a big event one day. The police would come and you'd get T-shirts and we would all, you know, everybody would go to the auditorium and we would all learn about it. Is that something that's around anymore? Maybe not Dare, but something like it?
I think it's around. We just aren't using that because of what we noticed here.
Yeah, we have, through our grants, and I guess I am a believer in it now, we do more of a strategic prevention framework, where we do more a community-level change in terms of policies and practices and beliefs and norms, so that we get the community to all sort of rally around what's their values. And that changes perception of harm. And certainly, we know that when parents perceive substances as harmful, kids' youth goes down. So, we really target parents as being the major influencer of their lives. And then, if kids don't have strong and connective parents, this is the importance of school. There are some different curriculums through the Drug Enforcement Agency, this is the DEA, that I know our school resource officers are interested in. And I think, well, I know our, your health curriculum people have reached out, are there evidence-based curriculums that they could bring into their schools? And there are. And more best practices, that you start early, but you start every year, because every year, kids get exposed to substances and peer pressure in different ways and at different levels and different substances. So, yes, that's something, I guess you should do it all, right?
Right. Multi-pronged attack, you know?
Yeah, just sort of attack it in all sort of venues is a good thing.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you for answering all my questions. Really appreciate it. You guys are doing an incredible job. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I just want to say one more thing. We get bored guests that come up here. And a while ago, we had some teachers and a principal from Enfield Street School. And you could just tell how proud they were of their work and how heartfelt they were about the work. And I just feel that from you guys. I really do. And I can tell that you guys work together and you really care about what you're doing, which is so wonderful for our town. So, again, thank you.
Ms. Pope.
So, as Tina and Charlotte have said, thank you for all the work that you do. I also have a few questions. I really have a lot of questions, but I'll just do a few and then I'll review everything else and see what else I can come up with. But one question, on the depression and suicide slide, when the question asked about feeling sad or hopeless, is there also a question that asks about feeling nothing at all? Because I know that clinically, sometimes it's that feeling of nothingness that is so characteristic of depression. And I'm wondering, are we capturing students who just don't have drive, who just don't? It's not that they recognize that they're hopeless, but maybe they just don't feel engaged with anything at all around them. Is there a way that we're capturing that? Because I think that's a really important slice. And if not, can we?
So, we have not captured it that way. I know that our next consideration around mental health will be anxiety, measuring anxiety. And I think we'll note that.
Concern about everything.
Yeah, measuring about everything. That's always the difficulty in developing a tool. And you always want to build off of what exists, so federal and state tools themselves. So, I think that's a great thing that we can note and look at for the next round. It's a good point.
That'd be great.
I think we can add any question. We just wouldn't have baseline, but you can always start baseline, right? So, anything that's important that you really want to know about your youth, we can, you know, in conversation with you, add it into the next survey round.
I think that'd be great, especially because the suicide slide is so high, yet kind of you noted yourselves, there almost seems like a discrepancy there between the number of kids who are reporting the sad, hopeless feelings, but also the number of kids who don't wish to be here anymore. So, I just, I wonder if there's something that can be explored there with additional or different questions. So, definitely something that I would like to talk about offline, too, if you're open to it. Another, a comment. I like what you said about building relationships and explaining feelings to children. I think sometimes we don't realize how much children are not simply miniature adults. They don't understand how to put words to most of their feelings. Sometimes, they'll just say, "I'm mad," but really, it's not mad at all. And I think that the work that you do and the work that you support with articulating and teaching feelings, especially more complex feelings for these younger children, is just super valuable. I think it will really show in the schools, as students face difficulties during their days, you know, behavioral issues. I think one of the best things that we can do is help our kids articulate what they're going through, so that they can seek that help and they know what to ask for from their trusted adults. And I just, I think that's really great. So, thank you for putting focus there. Another question about the survey, do you ever have concerns about sort of global survey honesty from students? I mean, and how do you...
So, in the world of surveys, we always tend to assume there's an under-reporting occurring, especially as we've moved to online surveys, because there is sometimes a distrust of an online survey tool and how that may be tied back. There is a script at the beginning of the survey that we hope is, you know, read with confidence from the adult facilitators in the room. But what we do know is that the data that we have mirrors that with which we see at the state and the federal level. So, it tells us that the discrepancies we see are consistent across the state and the nation. So, there's an under-report for adult surveys as well. We're not always that willing to say tons.
Makes sense. And then, something that connects with me, when I was in high school, I was in my town's coalition to reduce underage drinking. It was drinking specific, because drugs weren't really as much on the radar beyond Dare. So, and that was really cool, and it was a great opportunity. We spent a lot of time with our local police officers, made a lot of posters, had a lot of events, just really tried to kind of rub off on our peers the best that we could. And for the most part, what we were doing was seen pretty positively by some of the other students. So, one of my questions is, can you tell me a little bit about what Enfield Together is doing with the youth specifically? Like, how are the youth engaged in some of your programming? Or are they, or what are they doing to reach their peers?
I mean, I think you can too, but I know Andrea Maschek, who works with the youth council, she is doing fantastic work with, doing PSAs at, as Nantuck Community College. And I don't know if you ever listened to that station, but they are doing a phenomenal job getting, you know, making up those PSAs and getting the word out to their peers and to adults. So, the kids are working, I don't know, hard with just putting together videos and just making ways to speak to their peers about either drugs or alcohol or marijuana. So, I know that is in the works, even some of the videos, but they're doing the PSAs at, on the radio for the kids. Yeah.
So, they do a lot of peer-to-peer messaging, so you should follow them on Instagram, hashtag Enfield Youth Services. They absolutely create PSAs or some kind of positive prevention messaging every week. And they're doing a phenomenal job. And they're hosting a radio show at Aston Hook every week. And they're developing all of our PSAs that we put out. And they just did a contest, a national contest with the DEA. Actually, I'll send you the link. You can look it up on YouTube. They are nationally recognized as a fabulous advisory youth council. They went to California and did a gambling PSA for the National Gambling Association. And we take them everywhere with us, all the national conferences. And they're amazing, and they should probably come and talk to you about what they do.
I would love that.
Really?
If you can get some of those kids to come to a future meeting, work it out with Mr. Dreszek.
I will. They are your students.
I would love that.
They're amazing.
Do they ever put the PSAs up on the TVs in the high school?
The only one they did with your coaches was the substance, the prescription drug one. I don't know if that got posted.
Ms. Neville.
Thank you all for being here. I've been privileged to have an association with these folks for a long time. I won't say how long, a long time. Just a couple of quick things here. In terms of the cards that you've gotten, you've got the restaurants to put up and the individual, what do they call it?
Able tents, yeah.
Yeah. Would it be possible to get those or copies of those to us, just even, just so we know, because, you know, so we can see what it is? I think it's a great idea. I'm glad you're reaching out to the community people to do that. And it's amazing how many people, if you have something there, while you wait for your meal or whatever, you'll read it. As a suggestion for that, and maybe you've already done it, are we getting them into the schools as well, like guidance offices, the main offices, the nurse's office or anything like that, or even the housemasters or the vice principals' offices?
You know what? We ran out.
But it may be something that we could do. It's, you know, sometimes you have a captive audience in some of those places, and they read everything, or they check out everything that's in there anyway. So, that may be a point to get it out there.
Absolutely.
So, maybe through the superintendent, if we could do something like that, that would be great. Secondly, the survey that we, the document you had up here, it's, maybe it's my advancing years, but I can't read the small print as well as I can. Would it be possible to get through Kathy to get out the PowerPoint and just, so we can get a copy of it and just get the details of it? One other thing, you're talking about, the one, the only thing that really surprised me was you were checking on the results on gambling. I just hadn't thought that that would be included in that. What's your, what's the definition that they're asking for there? You start talking sixth, eighth, you know, grade and nine to 12. And we're not talking about grabbing your parents' credit card and going on the sites, are we? Or are we talking about something else?
We're talking about video gaming and...
No, I thought maybe they were talking about backroom crap games or something.
Oh.
Dating herself.
So, gambling in this survey is more generic explanation, and it has to do with games of chance. So, having an, playing a game with an uncertain outcome is the gist. And I'm looking now for what the details are. But it's something that we watch, because when we look at behaviors and age of initiation, the risk factors for gaming, and, well, gaming is now coming into the vernacular alongside gambling, they're similar for substance use, and your brain is activated in a similar way. So, sometimes the gambling thing can come first as youth. So, if you see kids that are, have risky behaviors, or in one community, they were having concerns about, youth were having trouble in school because of what was happening in their online games out of school. So, another sort of expanding area that we're watching. I think that was this community.
It was this community.
It was this community. Gets in sort of a blur for me. It was this community. So, the gambling definition, if it pops up right in front of me, I will read it to you.
That's okay.
But it's in the survey.
If you can get it to us later or something like that.
Sure.
I'd just be curious. It just, that was the only one that just struck me that I was surprised at. I'm rarely surprised anymore.
We did the presentation at the middle school, and I think that came up as a concern with our principals around the sort of the conflict that would come up with the online video gaming and Fortnite that kids were betting or other different things and items and bringing that conflict into school. I think we're going to ask more questions about it this year, coming up.
The other thing is, you do this every two years, right?
Yes.
So, and you're really looking for trend data and whether things have changed and whether you need to move your resources one way or the other and stuff like that, which I applaud you on. But you have a lot of programs. And the questions we've had here are great, but I think we may need to get educated, I mean, I know what you're doing, but maybe we should, in a future date, particularly once you get to the council and start talking about your MOU and those kinds of things, and maybe come back here with the chair's permission and Mr. Dreszek's permission and just kind of inform us of, I think, the parameters of the great work that you guys do. Because I don't, I don't think unless you're engaged in it, that you really know the great things that are going on here and how much impact we're having on kids, on parents, on teachers. I mean, for instance, we're talking about, you know, these kinds of things with kids. We've spent a great deal of time over the last eight years educating everybody that interacts with kids, from police officers to teachers, to custodians, to, you know, administrators and so on, and parents. We've done Rachel's Challenge. We've done, we've sensitized kids to the point, we know so much more about it, because our kids are so involved in it and watching out for it and picking up on it and not worrying now about telling somebody. They're reaching out to help, and they go out to somebody and let them know when somebody's in danger, which was, that was a great way to deal with it, because we, you know, they're not worried about snitching anymore, because we know we're helping. And so, those kinds of things have been going on. And I think you guys need to be applauded for, one, engaging in the community and gaining faith-based resources. The entire community is involved in this thing and carrying it out and especially sustaining it, which is, Jean and I have conversations and arguments about this for the last 10 years, I think, because it's no good, whatever we do, unless we can sustain it. Okay? And you guys have obviously done a great job. So, I applaud you and keep it up. I have retired, by the way.
No, you haven't.
You're the next one to go here. I don't think you'll ever retire, Jean, but keep up the good work, all of you. And thank you very much.
Ms. Reider.
No, I just wanted to say thank you. And it was looking at some of this data a couple of months back, where we had that brainstorming idea that we decided to take this to JFK and do this at the middle school. And the topics, again, were gaming, vaping, gambling, bullying, and anxiety. And it was lightly attended. And I think that if we do that again, that we need to get more parents to come, because, like you said... like you said, we educate our administrators and our custodians and our teachers. And I think that parents need to be more open to knowing what their kids are up to. And it's, oh, that's not my kid, that's another kid. But if they know in general what's going on, maybe they would see signs in their kid or of something coming down the road with their kid. And I'm just glad that we saw some of that data and that we came up with that idea. And I think we had 30 or 40 parents there, but I think it could be, I think it would be bigger than that. I think more people need to be educated on some of these things that they don't understand, like you didn't know about gambling. And it's, there are trends in negative aspects of our lives as well as there are trends in positive things in our life. And we need to be educated on all that and be more in touch with our kids. So, thank you.
Ms. Hernandez.
So I think that it's the last time I let Ashley speak before me because she took my points. Actually, and there is a word for what you were describing, which is alexiaemia, where you have difficulty, you know, pinpointing what is your emotion, what am I feeling? And so because, there's different reasons why that occurs, but sometimes it's, we just don't invest in emotional intelligence. What is it that I'm feeling? Can I feel two big things at once, even if they seem to conflict with each other? And so the answer comes out as nothing. Ah, wow. Yeah. Those are the answers that we get. And the reason that I bring that up is it's actually a really big conversation in my community. So autistic people are eight times more likely to commit suicide than the general population. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that there's so many emotions and part of the diagnosis is having difficulty with communication. And there's something, you know, like with my brain, I'm very specific. And so if I feel, and I like to quantify, so like, well, I feel 15% happy though, so I can't say that I'm sad. And so the answer comes as, I don't know. So, and I think that a lot of people, you know, that's specific to me as an adult, but I think that's true of most children especially, because they're developing and they're finding those words. So thank you for bringing that up. And also, I wanted to say thank you also, you said something so beautiful, which I appreciate, about the fact that sometimes when younger children, young adults even, are using, it is a coping strategy. There's something that's happening and they are making a decision to do the best that they can to get by. And it's our responsibility to offer a healthy choice and acknowledge the fact that there's something that's really hard for them. And maybe they didn't have the tools, maybe they didn't have the resources. And so thank you for coming in and providing those supports and not attaching maybe so much of a negative stigma to it and acknowledging that there's a reason why that coping strategy existed, as unhealthy as it was. My question is, you talk about marijuana use and I have to imagine that there's a difficulty with, people talk about marijuana and a lot positively. And what I see is a lot of positive talk about CBD. And we talk about how it's used and with many people with different diagnoses and the benefits and it cures cancer and it, you know, and I wonder, like, I don't know that it does, I'm not saying that. But I wonder if the, because there's so much information going into the potentially positive benefits of CBD, that that gets mixed. And also, you know, you have the difference between, like THC. And so where, when I was growing up, marijuana was just no. You know, now it's yes for this type, but I don't know. So what strategies do you have? And I mean, it's not approved for pediatric use outside of certain diagnoses. What strategies do you have? Because I think I can find, I can understand why that would be confusing for our youth when they hear so much about the positives marijuana.
We don't want to get into the medical sort of benefit of marijuana. What we want to say is, we know that sort of marijuana use of teens is not harmful and helpful for recreational use for them. We know it in pairs, they're, it impacts their brain development. Their pathways are being pruned. So if they start using substances early 11, 12, 13, sort of, it creates this sort of drug-seeking brain pathways where it sort of helps them cope with anxiety, it makes them feel good, and then sort of your body starts sort of tramping that down and then you have to use more. It just sets up a path of concern for us through medical research, that early onset of alcohol and/or marijuana or any kind of substance is not helpful to them. And marijuana recreational is not regulated, you know, it may not be safe. So again, we stay away from the medical component of marijuana, but we don't encourage or recommend the recreational use of marijuana. And its impact, because we know through research, it lowers IQ.
Right.
It impacts motivation. And there's a lot of anxiety and longer-term use can cause schizophrenia and increased anxiety. So there's a lot of concern health-wise for kids to be using marijuana.
Oh, and absolutely.
Without the oversight of a medical doctor.
That was, you know, if you, I just see in the media that positive presentation and I have to imagine that that's having a direct impact on the perception of not just youth but parents as well. And so, and I am in 100% there, you know, in the literature, it's clear that it's inappropriate for children. And people, I say children, I mean up to 25 to be using these substances. So, thank you.
No, thank you. It's out there. When a kid will come through the juvenile review board of being caught vaping in school, initially the parents will say, are you concerned or worried about this? And they'll say, no, not really. But when you start talking to them about, okay, let's talk about, you know, they've missed a lot of school, their grades are very low, we always ask children, what's your hopes and dreams? What do you want to do when you get out of college? And they'll say, I don't know. They've lost that, their hopes and dreams for the future. And really you can kind of say, when did you start smoking marijuana or using? And they'll say like 12. So let's go back to age 12. When did things start going down the wrong trajectory for your child? And it's 12.
When you look for external resources to address those internal feelings, you lose touch with that, with your inside.
You are right. There's reasons kids start using and that's what I want to know.
Yeah.
Because there's reasons. They're coping.
Yes.
And the only way they know how.
Yes. My question, and then my follow-up question is this, is for the survey, is it in all classrooms? Because I know, like, I'm talking about my, the disability population. Is it given to people in all classrooms? And also, is the survey sample size affected at all? Because there are individuals who are in maybe a different school to receive supports because of the fact that they have already been diagnosed with some of these more significant issues. And so does that potentially, I mean, could these numbers even be higher because we're missing?
To my knowledge, it's the children attending the middle school and the high school. So I'm not familiar with the alternative education programs in the community. Obviously, our administrators could speak on that more. But absolutely, I just had this conversation with another community today that has an alternative high school and I said, we need to be surveying and we need to be serving as a result of those data. So.
Mr. Poe.
Sorry, I promise this is the last one. Are there survey questions that function as socioeconomic indicators so that we can look at that as well? Are there any questions along the lines of, you know, sometimes I can't buy my own lunch? Or how often do you feel that you have enough? Or, you know, things like that? So we can, I think that there's a lot of interesting things to be found on both ends of the socio-economic spectrum when it comes to some of these issues. So I'm just wondering what you have for indicators, if any, or if you plan on adding them? Because I know you can't, you can only ask so much without the survey becoming not anonymous. So if it's a perception of need, you know, do we have perception of need questions?
We asked that question in 2005, sort of food insecurities and income, and then we took it out because I don't know why.
It wasn't really, we weren't really getting much from it. As we looked at how the data came out, we didn't feel the students were necessarily understanding. And we'd used previous survey tools from other, really from national resources to kind of get a measure. But the long story short is, we know what the risk factors are in terms of various socioeconomic indicators. So we think of it in terms of health disparity. So we know your school has data on free and reduced lunch. And we're not, if we know what those risk factors are, just as we talked about in the beginning, we can implement strategies that address those rather than doing a really long tool and then doing a lot of cross-tabulation to tell us kind of what we already know.
So you use like our census information and our school information to know, like, what is the socioeconomic, you know, picture for our students? And then you can also see things like what is the educational level of the adults in the community? So you pull all that when you consider programming development?
When you're looking at needs assessment, absolutely, yeah.
So I will add that the only gambling I did in middle school was playing Guys and Dolls in the auditorium, so, just so I want to be out in the public, so I know it's a different gambling today than it was at my time. Thank you, all three of you for, you guys have a great job and keep up the work, that's all we can say, and do come back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bring the kids, all right? We'll do that. They'll love it.
Number seven, superintendent's report, Mr. Dreszek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to just state for the record that we gave Jean more time for this than I got for my budget presentation. So therefore, on television, on record, we're even. And you're not getting me to commit to doing anything else. I'm just kidding. I appreciate the three of you and particularly Jean for all that she does for us. I can't tell you, a day doesn't go by literally where Jean doesn't send me an email with a grant or a conference opportunity for someone within the school community. And for that, we're very, we're very grateful.
I just want to add though, don't put them up on a pedestal that high because it takes a long time for us to pull them back down.
Oh, don't worry. She's, she's pretty well-versed on bringing me back down, trust me. One word, Austin.
Austin.
Yeah. But our student, Matt is here as our student representative, if you'd like to be here.
Matt, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. On this past Monday, or yesterday, the concert band and the symphony orchestra performed at Central Connecticut State University for the Lydian Festival. And they both performed really well. And, let's see, also along that line, all the Enfield High School jazz ensembles will be performing at UConn for their first-ever jazz festival there. And that's on Friday. And I'd like to add that we're closing out the festival, so kind of like a special guest there, which is exciting. And another thing of music news, of course, is the String Festival is coming up on March 22nd at 7:00 in the Enfield High Auditorium. And for those of you who don't know, that's where students, students in the orchestras from all around the town come and play at Enfield High. So it's really exciting to get everyone together for that. And the thing I'm most excited about this week is on Thursday, March, is that the 14th? There is the first school-wide talent show at the combined high school. And tickets are $5, sold at the door, and all proceeds are going to benefit the senior class and the Triumph Music Honors Society.
Awesome. What time is that?
That's at 7:00 this Thursday.
Thank you. Mr. Dreszek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. La Mesa, Dr. Wiley will hold the final parent presentation about Common Core Math for three to five parents on Wednesday, March 13th. There's a flyer enclosed in your packet with additional information. And this year's invention convention for students in grade three to seven will be held on Saturday, March 23rd at Enfield High School. Family and friends are welcome to attend the event and there's a flyer enclosed in your packet as well. There's also a, within your packet, a list of all the March events, including what Matt just referenced, the Enfield High School Talent Show on the 14th at 7:00 PM. And I'll just make a note that we are getting into the season where there's a lot of events and/or, we slowly call it award season, so you'll start to see more and more invitations coming your way. That will conclude the superintendent's report.
Any questions for the superintendent? I declare audience is closed. Number nine, board member comments, Ms. LeBlanc.
Just a couple of things. The Enfield High Faculty versus Students basketball game was last week and I heard our deputy superintendent played in that game.
Assistant superintendent.
I heard you did pretty well, but you, what, did you guys lose by three?
We did lose. We've never beaten the students, to be honest with you. Next year's the year, though.
It's great when Mr. Longy goes back, the kids are excited to see him. Also, this Friday at 6:00 PM is the JFK Faculty versus Students game. Doors open promptly at 5:45 and the game is starting promptly at 6:00 PM. Also, Safe Grad is holding their Purse Bingo on Friday, March 22nd from 6:00 to 10:00 at the American Legion. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. Ms. Hernandez.
So I think that, and I might be wrong, but are we, I don't think we're meeting during spring break. Is that correct? Okay. Well, that's a bummer for me because it's autistic awareness. And I would like to say it's autistic acceptance month, but I thought that there was something interesting. I brought up something the last time we were here and I wanted to talk a little bit more about the history of some of the barriers that autistic people meet. And I mentioned to you about Asperger's and why, you know, the, some of the statements that were made. And so, you know, I just want to take this opportunity to kind of educate a little bit more and talk about that a little bit more because I don't think that a lot of people understand how deep this is. So in, Hans Asperger was a Nazi sympathizer. And the way that this, the classification of autistic individuals came about was that children who were identified as autistic were sent to him. And what he noticed was that there were children who were diagnosed with autism that seemed, he called them little professors. They were smart. They were, they noticed connections and patterns. They were able to verbalize those patterns. And so Hans Asperger's, who was working with Nazi regime, recognized that those specific children could be trained and they, we could use their inherent talent as, you know, having, being so smart and being able to make those connections, being those little professors, and that they could contribute to society. And what happened, you know, we talk about the Holocaust and obviously acknowledging the tremendous loss of life in the Jewish community, but hundreds of thousands of disabled people were also euthanized as well, regardless of their ethnicity, because they were seen and I forget the German term, but it means a life not worth living. And so these autistic children who were sent to Hans Asperger were then separated out. And Hans Asperger directly signed the orders to, for 800 children to be sent, to be euthanized. And so, and the orders would say things like, this child is an unbearable burden to their mother, those types of things. It typically was children who were not able to verbalize, it was children who maybe, I mean, just the sensory environment alone, if you think about the dysregulation of being in that type of setting, it was devastating. And so with the disability community, what then happened is, in community at large, this man who was arguably a monster for doing this, these children went and they either were injected with poison or they were starved to death. And the, on the medical records, what was officially listed as their cause of death was pneumonia. So it is frustrating then that, you know, then he's, the syndrome became, you know, Asperger's and it's, you know, the high functioning form of autism and it's the people, and that's offensive. It's offensive to me because I am no better than any of my autistic peers. I stand shoulder to shoulder with them. I'm not more valuable than somebody because I can verbalize. I'm not more valuable than somebody because, you know, I cover myself in research. I enjoy that. And that's why, you know, and so Hans Asperger's enjoyed an academic career until I think it was the 80s or 90s. You know, and it was because as society then shifted and said, but he found the good autism. Well, we can't ignore the fact that he euthanized 800 children. And so that's one of the reasons why it's no longer in the United States, there's many reasons why, but one of the reasons why is because it's no longer available as a diagnosis. But one of the reasons why is because it's no longer available as a diagnosis than the DSM-5. And I believe by 2020, it's no longer going to be an internationally available diagnosis. So the reason that I want to bring that up is, you know, we talk about stigma. We talk about bias. We talk about these things against disabled people. And I, we don't, no, we don't want to talk about it. And I think that every single person, I can tell, every single person on this board knows that people with disabilities are valuable. And they deserve to be here, and we deserve a space. And so I think it's important that we talk about that history and how dangerous it is, literally dangerous, to stigmatize people with disabilities. And so that was, I was saving it for Autism Acceptance Month because you are aware we're here. So I will also throw out the thing. I know that light it up blue is a fun thing, but the autism community prefers light it up gold. So if, you know, you want to wear blue and be proud, please do. But also, if you would consider wearing gold at some point during the month, that would also be appreciated. So.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Mr. Neville?
No comment.
Thank you, Mr. Neville. Mr. Ryder?
I also wanted to mention that in March, the end of the month, we start our S-Back testing. And principals have sent letters home to grades three through eight with scheduling specific to grade levels by school. So parents, just keep an eye out for that, please. As testing will begin at the end of this month. March 15 at Eli Whitney. They're doing an Eli Whitney PTO night at Nomads. Three hours, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., all the games you can play for one $20 wristband. Also tomorrow night, there is a fundraiser at Red Robin, March 13, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And the fundraiser tomorrow night is for the Jacob Carlander Memorial Scholarship Fund. So that's something that I've asked the PTOs to also share on their pages. Former Enfield student. And also on March 15, Friday, there is a Two Moms Designer Purse Bingo Night at the Knights of Columbus from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Tickets are still available. And that is a fundraiser for the Sixth Annual Two Moms on a Mission Enfield Public Schools Egg Hunt. That is April 20. And so I just wanted to mention that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Mr. Poe?
All right. So in case hunting for eggs is not your thing, on April 20, there's also going to be the Enfield Clean Sweep, which is a great volunteer effort to pick up litter around the community. So anyone interested in doing that can meet on the town green at 10:30 in the morning. I think it's a great thing to do. It's one of three large volunteer cleanup efforts that have been happening every year in Enfield. And I just think it's a wonderful thing to do. So maybe if you're practicing for finding eggs, you can practice to find litter and make Enfield a little bit of a nicer place. Other than that, before you go check out your awesome talent show on Thursday, that's Enfield Street Schools' PTO meeting at 5:00.
Thank you, Mr. Poe. Ms. Riley?
Okay, I want to say last night was a great evening for Enfield First readers. Ashley's son and my son received their recognition last night along with, I think about almost 100 kids showed up, so that was awesome. And thank you to Comey from ETV because the video is already up on the YouTube. So that's great. The mayor did a great job. You know how he always gets pumped up with kids? So he was, he got them all riled up, and it was, it was really good. I think the kids had a great time. There was a Henry Barnard PTO meeting tonight. Obviously, the weekend of the 23rd is going to be busy. There is stuff going on everywhere. So if you can't find something to do, I don't know. But Saturday, March 23, is the Special Persons Dance for Henry Barnard School. There is going to be two sessions. Kindergarten and first grade are going to be from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. And second grade is going to be 2:30 to 4:30 p.m. A flyer is going to be going out in the next couple of days. The RSVP date is going to be on March 20. It's going to be $1 per person to attend. There will be a sign-up genius to sign up for snacks and drinks to bring. And they need volunteers, about five people per each session. So that's exciting. You want, Tim, you want me to get you the numbers for, correct, for the 8% increase? So I figured out the increase is going to be 133,740. So the total, instead of this one is 1,671,753. The next one will be 1,805,493 for correct payment. Yep, no problem. Sarah, thank you for your history lesson on autism. So now that, and I don't want to sound a fool, but, so are they going to call Asperger something different now?
So currently in the DSM-5, to receive, you receive the autism diagnosis by a certain set of criteria. And now they're separating it out by level of support. And so you can say, it really depends on how the person prefers to be referred to. I prefer identity first, so I, autistic. But somebody with autism is also, you know, everybody's entitled to how they want to be referred to. But Level 1 is typically like minimal support. And so somebody like me, I'm able to kind of navigate my life with minimal, I need support, but it's minimal. And then there's Level 2 and Level 3, with Level 3 needing the most significant supports. So I, I'm not sure if the ICF is going to go more toward a support level.
I got you. Well, thank you. So that is all I had. But I'm going to put a motion out there to suspend the rules at 11A, to add to the agenda for new business, to cancel the April 9 regular board meeting.
Motion by Ms. Riley.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. LeBlanc. This is to add a, a line item to our agenda. Any discussion? Show of hands, all in favor? We have seven in favor and zero against. Anything else? So like I say every time, you guys pretty much covered all my bases. I did enjoy the First Readers yesterday. That was great. I thought the mayor was going to give the kids a proclamation that they could scream all the time, but...
I did enjoy that.
Yes, he did mention it to them that it's time you can, just today, you can scream all you want, so. But they were great. The kids were awesome. And, and the staff and everybody did a great job. And the volunteers did a great job. And I think that's all I got, to be honest. I'll leave it at that.
Youth Services kind of sold the show.
Yeah.
Yes, they did. And it was a great, great presentation.
Not in a bad way.
So we will go to unfinished business. I need a motion to remove from the table the appointment of Joint Facility Committee. Moved by Mr. Neville, seconded by Ms. LeBlanc. Any discussion of removal from the table? Show of hands, all in favor? Seven, zero, zero. So I want to make a motion to appoint Ralph Lazera to our Joint Facility Committee elect or any, moved. Can someone move the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Neville, seconded by Ms. Riley. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations, a motion to close nominations? Motion by Mr. Blank, seconded by Mr. Neville. All in favor of closed nominations? Show a hand. So we closed nominations. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Abstain.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mrs. Depau?
Yes.
Mrs. Riley?
For.
Chairman Crusell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So could we get the information to Deb McCarthy to get him on the rolls for that? And thank you for your service and, and congratulations. So now that brings us to new business. We added the item 11A to cancel April night's meeting because it so happens that it's school vacation week and nobody will be here. So unless you want to just come listen to me, but...
You could sing.
So do I have a motion to cancel April night's meeting? Mr. Neville, motion seconded by Ms. Riley. Any discussion? Do we need a roll call? A roll call, please.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mrs. Depau?
Yes.
Mrs. Riley?
For.
Chairman Crusell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So you guys got a day off. So that's 11A. So now we're at 12A curriculum.
We have our meeting is coming up on the 14th, which is this Thursday. And as you know, from the last, the time we spoke about this, I think in the last meeting, Mr. Dag was getting the details worked out so he could officially present it. And he's on our applications. And so he's ready to go. And our hope is, is that, and we, I think we brought it up, but through the chair to the superintendent, if we could possibly get the curriculum folks with John Dag and Michelle and the others to come and present some of this stuff to us. Just to, I think it's a good time to get it out to the public and get it out to our board as to the, the impact that this can have on our, our kids and the opportunities that it can give our kids. So, that being said...
Just to clarify, that's the credit program at STIC and with Northeastern.
Yeah, well, that's Northeastern, too. But, yeah. So if we can come out here, I think it's a, it's a, we all thought it was a good opportunity. And if we can get it out to the public so they, they're aware of that and educate the public of some of these good things that are going on.
Would the end of April be too late? Or is it something we, because we're missing a meeting, we only have one meeting in April now.
It's, to me, it's, I'd leave it at the superintendent's discretion.
The next meeting, we have the athletes, and we also have the state reps coming in, so.
We're approving the application this week, so anytime really is fine.
So maybe we put it off to the end of April?
Yeah.
Time you meet, six or seven?
That's fine.
What time do you meet? Six or seven?
What's the question?
What time do they, you guys meet? Six or seven?
Six.
We're meeting at six.
Six.
And I think the conference room there. And all we're, all we're doing is giving the consensus of our group, and we're, and we're making a recommendation to the superintendent to go on with this. So that would, that I think would be good. I'm happy that we can get this moved along because it's a, you never know with the red tape that goes on with these types of things. And I think Mr. Dag, being who he is, is very, very good at getting through that kind of stuff.
12B Finance?
We haven't had a meeting since last time, but our next meeting is next Monday at 6:00.
Okay. 12C Policy, Mr. Ryder?
Policy Committee concluded reviewing the balance of the 4,000 series, which were sent off to Cabe. They will be available to the Board of Education for their first reading at our next meeting. Next, we'll be moving on to the 5,000 series, which is also a very thick series of policies. So we'll be breaking that up into chunks like we did with the previous series. So get those off to you soon.
12D Leadership, we have none. 12E Joint Facilities, we have interviews. We shortlisted the master plan applications to four. We have interviews scheduled for next Tuesday and Wednesday here in the Enfield Room at 6:00 p.m. And we're moving forward on, and we're moving forward on the second-phase roof of Barnard. JFK Billing, we have interviews this Saturday from 8 to God knows when.
We also have four, right?
Yeah, we have four, four architects. We're trying to fast-track this to go right to council next Monday to get it approved. And with Finance and everybody on board to approve their contract because we're hearing rumbling from our illustrious governor that he wants, if we don't have someone in, an architect on contract by April 1st, that we could lose JFK. So we are doing due diligence to not, it's not going to happen. People voted for this referendum. We're going to stick to it, and the state's going to stick to their obligation on this, so.
We also have a meeting coming up this Thursday to talk about the...
RFP for the consultant, the...
Can't think of the right term.
Owner rep?
Owner rep.
Owner rep.
Thank you. Owner rep.
Yep.
Which we used to do in-house, but now we need to go out on that, so. Joint Security, I don't think you guys met?
No, we meet quarterly, and we'll meet again in May.
Okay. H, we did have a joint insurance meeting today. And if you want to say a few words, I thought it was great news that spending and everything is, is above board and above what others municipalities are doing.
Right, and Mayor Ludwig had mentioned getting the committee to come together and speak before the town council in August to kind of talk about what we've done and how effective the committee's been since we formed. We were saying time has flown. It's got to be over three years now? Four? So he feels that we've done a really good job, and he feels that everybody should know what we've done.
And we got an RFP going out for a new consultant. I think it's already hit the, hit the, whatever, however they do it, newspapers.
Just a point of information, since it's a joint committee, do we want to have a joint meeting with them?
Yes, it's going to be a joint...
A joint meeting, it's not just to the council.
It's going to be one of those 6:00 meetings before the council meeting, where it's going to be a joint Board of Ed council meeting. We're somehow going to set it up in here to be on camera, and we're going to present, have the staff come in and present that. Yes, that's, that's what we're looking for. Hopefully, we'll have the new consultant onboard then, too. And we'll arrange some seating in here, but we're all going to, it's all going to be done here on their, at their 6:00 presentations that they started.
It's going to be way more fun than curriculum.
And other than that, I don't have any other committees to report on, so. Number 13, Approval of Minutes. Regular Board of Ed meeting minutes, February 28, 2019.
Still moved.
Moved by Ms. Riley, seconded by Mr. Poe. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven, zero, zero. 14, Approval Accounts and Payroll?
We don't have any.
15, Correspondents and Communications?
There are none.
16, We Have a Need to Go in Executive Session for Matters Related to Personnel and Collective Bargaining. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Neville, seconded by Mr. Poe. Any discussion? We are going into, oh, no, all in favor? Seven, zero, zero. So good night, and thank you.